Reconvening the retreat meeting on February 23. Working lunch, how about you? All right, so where we at?
To the ordinances.
Oh, yes, and this ordinance review. I don't know about you guys, but I looked at Kevin's and there was a point, just so you know to get you familiar, as we, I think allocated X amount of dollars. Nick, were you here then? I think you were.
I wasn't.
Back when Christina Frazini was...
It was in 2014.
Right. We knew we had issues. We allocated X amount of funds for Kevin to go through it, who, my understanding is, Kevin export as an attorney in ordinance. And apparently that was either written up and passed him and it just never came to fruition. And it's money that's out there that we spent. So I did not take the time to go through all of that. And I'm not even sure if the changes were in there. And I know there were issues when Brian was here, that it wasn't properly redlined, where they just made the changes, I think the argument was, rather than them saying, here's what we're striking, here's what we're adding. So it wasn't really clarity when it came to that. But then, fast forward, and we have Robin here, and she looks at our, and this is what we've talked about, and I think we've discussed this as one of our top goals, is to get this all cleaned up. And there are just so many glaring things that, and again, we hired Benchmark, a third party, to help Robin with the ordinance writing at the time. And there were so many contradictions and things we needed to, and I made some notes, obviously this is really marked up. So just going through the Benchmark letters is really where I started.
Well, we deny Benchmark for the ordinance, Margaret. We always have to help with Broadmoor.
Broadmoor, but then that's when they determine...
When they're looking at this, it's similar.
They determined all the things. So what, that had led to them writing up a report that I think Robin was going to support. And then at that time, Robin was leaving, and then they just tabled this. So we, this never came, and now it's coming full circle, and it's back into public for discussion in open session. So some of the things that, from Richard Smith, their planning advisor, he said, "A few items he would recommend addressing in the near future." He says he strongly, I'm highlighting it, so I'm going through the first paragraph, "Strongly recommend, however, for the village to rewrite its development ordinance once the land use plan has been adopted." So that, we haven't adopted that, but a number of ordinance amendments last few years indicate of the need for a new, more updated development ordinance. So there's been a lot of turnover, he comments, and its ability to keep changes to these ordinance intact and in order have been an issue as well. Urgent changes, he's saying that they're overly complex, unnecessarily cumbersome. Processes do not need to be onerous. And layout and organization of the ordinances is antiquated. So, I mean, this is from a third party coming in, just looking at it and saying, "This is too challenging." And my concern is it can lead to potential litigation issues, I would think, if there's conflicting...
It's vague.
And if it's vague and stuff like that, that we're not being clear on this. And he goes on to say later, that there's a lot better way to clean these things up. So the urgent changes I list is zoning ordinance requires all requests for conditional use permits to be heard by the village planning board and village council. And he goes on to note, "CUPs are cases that must be handled through a quasi judicial hearing process." So instead of going to, a CUP going to the planning board, he's saying that there really should be a quasi judicial process through a board of adjustments. So, we're going to talk about power plays, that's a power play to move it to, which is not even, he's saying that, so we need to make sure that that happens going forward, I would think. It requires finding of facts, I don't know if we do anything but implement saying, "Look, if it's a CUP, it doesn't go to planning board, it goes to a board of adjustments." Right?
Right.
Is that what I'm reading?
Right.
Okay. The second thing, he says, "Recommend for the village to make better utilization of board of adjustments. More common practice for board of adjustments to handle quasi judicial hearings." So same thing, really. Third, I noted, "Planning boards typically handle advisory decisions, make recommendations to the elected board. The board of adjustment, on the other hand, typically handles quasi judicial, rarely involved in setting zoning policies." So there's clear separation of why we need these two boards. And it's, he's saying, goes on to say, "It's imperative that the board realizes the types of cases that they're hearing, advisory versus quasi judicial." That advisory is a planning board that comes to us and it's just a recommendation. "We would not recommend it for the elected board to serve as the board of adjustments, nor that they continue their current practice of reviewing and hearing quasi judicial matters." So again, it all kind of goes back to allowing planning board more authority, if you will, to make decisions when they're really not, because when you look at a board of adjustments, you're really looking at expertise to look at things. You know, planning board, you can be a little more lenient on who you bring in on that.
Right.
That's what I gather.
Usually you have attorney with your board of adjustment.
And they, he did recommend, make sure that the attorney is always at present at the...
Because it isn't about how you feel about things or what you, it's specific to the ordinance and what the exact law is, that's why.
Just a side question, we've been having, I know the attorney that we have, the board of adjustment retired. Do we have...
I don't believe we currently have one. No, there is no attorney. Kelly was working on asking a few attorneys if they were interested.
And our board of adjustment hasn't met in, what, two years? I don't know when their last training was, or...
When was our last conditional use permit?
Well, but we didn't use them for...
I was gonna say...
I know, but it should be.
Yeah. It was just last month, when the planning board saw one.
Right.
We have, we have, we have a board of adjustment that hasn't met in two years. I assume they haven't been trained in two years, or haven't been training in two years.
Maybe they need to set up...
Most of the same people.
Yeah.
That have been on it for a while.
So how much have they done?
Not much.
Maybe we need to send them, do they have training for it, I'm assuming?
They normally do, I mean, I think they used to do basically with the attorney, in the house, kind of training, you know.
Okay.
But like I said, we don't have a...
Well, I can follow up on where that was. Like I said, Kelly had sent an email around asking a few attorneys if they were interested in serving as our board of adjustments attorney. We heard from Melanie that you didn't necessarily have to have anybody on contract, but that generally sometimes what happened is when you needed somebody, then you would go to, you know, you'd go to a few different attorneys, you'd have them kind of like in your back pocket, kind of going like, hey, do you have time to come this time? You don't necessarily just have to have a contract with one, is what she said. Because she said she serves as the board of adjustment attorney for several jurisdictions. Could she recommend anybody for us? I think she knew people who were on the list that we asked. And we asked other, like, we asked, I believe it was Weddington and Westlake Chapel, like, who do you use for board of adjustment attorney? And then, yeah, where that is.
So, I guess this would be page...
And I can find out about training as well.
One, two, three. As you get down, look at the paper. I mean, obviously, it's a big concern there. Current ordinances basically are long overdue for a rewrite, not been updated in over 20 years. And it just, to do that, I mean, it just will help us ensure we're more in compliance with state statutes, and that would lead to, you know, maybe revisiting what Melanie just suggested before she left, that there's a lot of things that have not been acted on. Also, provides, when you rewrite, an opportunity to update the tailor to it, to our village. And also combining, which I know, combining the ordinances into one document. Talks about Laura, the design review board, should be a standalone technical committee for primarily a professional staff and technical experts.
And that, and we did have, the, the design review board at one time was a separate committee that we basically had two, you know, a couple of different experts in, you know, construction and architecture, I think.
Maybe landscaping?
Landscaping.
I feel like a master of carpentry.
We had, we had, I guess the problem with it became, again, getting members to serve on the board.
Do they have to be a resident of Marvin, on the design review?
I think we...
I am, let me look, I don't, I'm trying to...
I can't remember if we had...
Maybe not another one.
We might have had one or two that were...
I thought that was on PRG, we were allowed one, non-resident.
No, no, the PRG was not. The design review board, I think we had the non-resident, you know, as an expert, because they were an expert thing. But then, like I said, we had trouble filling it, and again, they decided to use the planning board as a...
But now you had put that design report, design review board in with the planning board, so if you're going to, you would have to separate that board again.
Yeah.
And set up parameters for that particular board.
Is there a conflict there?
I have the rules of procedure. Let's see if it talks about membership. The design review board shall consist of five members, one planning board member, which is appointed by the planning board, one village council member appointed by the council, two professionals, either landscape architect, regular architect designers, et cetera, appointed by the council. Such persons need not be residents of the Village of Marvin. One Village of Marvin resident who has special training and/or experience in a design field such as architecture, landscape architecture, horticulture, planning, or a closely related field, appointed by the village council. And then the village planner will be the support staff. So one, two, three, four, five, five members, and then the planner.
Okay.
And you're on the term for three years, although the initial appointments were staggered one, two, and three, so the terms were staggered. June 1 expiration. Vacancies shall be filled as they occur in the same manner as the original appointment. Council, they serve at the pleasure of council.
So, did we disband the design review board at one point?
I guess they did.
So is there, because I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, is that you look at ordinance to see what you can do, but then, certain things will come to, is that the design review board, has it got the look that we're looking for? And are they stepping in at what point? I mean, I guess, what point does it go from planning board to design review board?
I need to look at the ordinance and see. I mean, I think your concept is correct, that it's about, more about the feel and look and character, because not everything is always laid out perfectly in the ordinance for them to, for us to be able to interpret. So those guys are interpreting it. But I'd have to look and see under what circumstances.
Do we reestablish the design review board, I guess would be my question.
It was after the planning board, you know, process, then went the design review board, you know, when their constructions, I guess, when they were, you know, getting...
Especially if we're talking about making some of these big, you know, for village center and some of the other things that are becoming online, those are the things that we're going to need to have answers to, from the board that's looking at those specific.
Ms. Derrick. I mean, I personally think we should have a separate design review board, I'm fine with that. I'm not, I'm not so sure that I really want, that I think that, you know, council or planning board should be represented on it almost, not quite sure.
We only have one.
Well, one planning board and one council.
What? For a part of board of five?
Right. Yeah. I don't like multiple.
She's available for that.
I'm just that big on the multiple hats.
Hey, you wanted to go talk to the design...
I have PRG on my plate.
Well...
Because, I mean, if it's a design review board, to me, I think you want more people with that kind of experience.
Me too.
Right.
I mean, I'm not good at that stuff, like...
I'm good at Chachis. I'm good at spatial planning. No Chachis for me.
Good at the Chachki planning, the colors. Could have renamed them more than Chachis.
Yeah, let's do the Chachki board.
I like that.
I know my limits.
All right, so are we thinking about...
Well, I think we revisit it and put it, and put it on one of the next upcoming meetings and saying, and then once we get that list that's going out to the HOA boards, then we can say, we can put out a notice saying, "Look, we have a need for a design review. We're looking for a specific," and figure out what it is, and we can discuss that amongst all of us, but put that on the agenda in March to determine what it is we're looking for, what kind of expertise we're looking for. And I'm okay if we don't have anyone, so it just gets one less councilman, one less planning board member, and separate...
Then don't we have to change our rules and procedures for that?
Well, we already changed it, because that's, that's a longer rule.
Oh, because we don't really have one, okay.
I mean, that's the old, that's the old thing.
Right.
Right, this is their rules of procedure. I don't, I guess it must, I guess there must be a motion at some meeting to disband it. Got it.
I believe there was.
Well, I mean, then maybe we discuss it and see if we want the makeup to be...
Well, it's good for open discussion in a meeting. Figure out what, who it is we want.
Okay.
We'll go from there, okay? Standards to be adhered to, standards to be as detailed as desired by the village council. So we give them some guidance on what we'd like to see, but then they, okay, "The current subdivision review process seems to be redundant. Presently, the planning board and village council review subdivision sketch plans, preliminary construction plans, and then final plans. Sketch plan and final plat should suffice for planning board and village council review." So, whereas in the past, we were involved in all of it, and that probably took up some of the time and the process, and the complaints we've heard in the past from developers and stuff, it, it's, my understanding is, what he's saying here is, you don't have to be in every step of this.
Right.
And again, it's, yeah, it'd be about control, what, you know, what, you know, and we should let the system work the way it is, if we have qualified people that are at planning board to look at these things and...
Yeah, that's, that was always my complaint, my feeling was that, you know, we have a planning board, they spend six months working on this thing, and now it comes to us, and we could have spent another six months, I mean, what do we have them for? And the reply I always got was, well, yeah, well, who you got on the planning board? Then what do we have them on the planning board for if we don't, if we don't trust them, or even, you know, if we have no faith in them, then why are we having them on there? You know, I mean, I know we have the final, you know, it's our, we approve it and stuff, but I think, you know, to go over everything that they've spent six months going over again and taking...
So he goes on to say, "Customary in many jurisdictions where sketch plans will be reviewed by staff, preliminary plats reviewed by planning board, construction boxes reviewed by staff, TRC, final plat reviewed by staff," and TRC stands for what?
Type of...
Type of, design review board.
And I'm fine with that, if that's, if that's, you know, I mean, why are we, I mean, I think I know why, but why are we having all these, you know, overlaps and stuff, or it's limited to certain groups that they only look at it and...
I don't think we...
And I'm not trying to expedite the process necessarily, just to make it easy, but I think we're, if they, I know it was an issue when Robin came in, knowing what she knew about planning, and for a third party now to look at a simple process and come back with this, to me is glaring that we need to address. And two cumbersome, current draft design, draft sign provisions are entirely too cumbersome. This is no surprise. Much can be achieved with less wording and detail. In light of the fact that village does not have much existing non-residential inventory, I think he's saying that, you know, and this is on a sign provisions, right? I know it was a very long, what was our sign ordinances was forty-some pages, and Charlotte's like twenty?
I don't know, but you guys talked about it earlier on time.
I just remember those names, it's like, Charlotte has a forty, twenty-page document, we supposedly have a forty-some page document. There's more on, the plate just got a little bigger. And I was curious about the Supreme Court versus Towns of Gilbert, just because I lived out in that area, what that was about. Planning services, some type of planner staffing up to two days a week. Yuck, yuck. Only two days a week is due to the current workload that we have. User experience, I think that's what we have, that's why we hired Laura. And update the spreadsheet with all current subdivisions. This is key, too. Be created for better tracking permits of enforcement of activity. You know, and village needs a map depicting all remaining tracks. That could be still developed, I think that's...
That's important for the land use plan, too, we talked about that.
Right.
We need that. Is there a, have you come across one, Laura? Is there a subdivision listing somewhere? Haven't found a list. I mean, I could probably give it, if we don't have one, I mean, I would think there's one somewhere, but I know in the roads document, it summarizes it by subdivision, so that would probably be a starting point, at least for you to just take a, take that document and just have it at least, so you're going to know what the list is. That'd be good, to start from there, that'd be great. Okay.
Maps. But... The maps folder, or neighborhoods folder.
Oh, maps?
I think it's neighborhoods, sorry. One of those two has like all of them.
And, oh, under planner, maybe? Planner, neighborhoods? I don't see neighborhoods.
Check maps.
I guess what we're asking in your spare time.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, it's just things that need to be addressed, and I didn't have anything else, I just highlighted some glaring things for me, and I don't know if you guys would want to, I mean, I, I mean, this whole thing was almost highlighted. I mean, it was very good information for me that was eye-opening, so.
I mean, we definitely have, it sounds like we need some more, we need some...
It needs to be updated.
Non-redundancies and...
It needs to be updated, it needs to be clarified, it needs to be, you gotta get that, all the wordiness cumbersome, the language out of it, that I think we can clean it up and still get the same effect that keeps Marvin special.
Well, of course, like you said, if you want to try and get everything into one spot where you don't figure like, you know, you're getting, I'll go to that, and then I'll go over here, look at that.
And that's what they were, there's a lot of that, is what I understand, too, so...
Definitely want to get Melanie's corrections and whatever, or updates, whatever.
So obviously, we're...
We were here earlier, Melanie, the attorney, said that she had been submitting by email some corrections to ordinances, and she doesn't believe that.
And that's over a year ago.
They would ever incorporate it.
But Lisa was here, and Robin, and apparently it's never kind of come through the process where we would have said, yes, that's a, that's a go, but...
Well, have you talked about hiring someone to do it in its entirety at some point?
Well, we had someone looking at it and authorized, I think, up to $20,000 or $30,000, the attorney, to do it, and he, my understanding is, he did it, and then it was taken, and then was redmarked again.
Be careful.
And, you know, so it just, you know, so then it never got anywhere, so nothing was ever done, so that money is just, but I think the information's still there.
Okay.
So if we circle back to someone like Kevin, which I don't have a problem with, he's an expert in the field, and say, "All right, you want to take another stab at this and see what you did already?" And the only thing I think that there was a contention was, there wasn't clear, was to Brian's point, well, okay, this is what it says, but what did it say originally? So, you know, the striking of the redlining and stuff, all what he did is just put in the new stuff.
Oh, so he didn't leave...
That's my understanding, if I remember it back in 2014, which every day my mind gets a little...
Careful.
Less filled. No, 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 I'm not, you know, I mean, it's just, my, my mind is, I only remember so much, but I seem to remember being in the meeting, whether it was back in 2015, 14, or whatever, and it just never got, it never moved through the process where anything was changed, and I know we spent money on it. And the concern that Kevin was making is like, well, how far do you want me to take this? Because I can take this to a point where you could be in it for $50,000 to $75,000 rewrite, and that wasn't the intent.
Never that far.
But no, he was saying that in the meeting, he's like, "How far do you want me to go with this? Do you just want me to clean this up, or do you want me to rewrite it? Rewrite could cost us, I don't know."
Yeah, I wouldn't think we need to do that, I mean...
Okay.
So we can investigate where we're at and talk to him.
And how we get.
See where we can...
And if it means hire him, that could be a decision for council, I think, and just say, hey, yeah, let's have him take another look at this, and go back to what the original was, what he proposed, and if he could just...
We need to see, we need to see, well, but we also need to see what it was, and then what the proposed changes are, so that we can make sure that we're...
Right.
Understanding it and agreeing with it. Okay.
Again, not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure that's how everything went, the, what But that's all I have for that. And then, now we're on to discussion, reading lunch. We're at number nine now, and that's roundtable discussion of the downtown corridor. So my thought with this is, you know, I've been hearing, you know, there's two sides of big contention on what, you know, when we were in the election about what we want, but also heard from, you know, one of the planning board members, he goes, "When I talk to both sides, it's like, you're not too far apart, so what is it that you actually want?" But to use the word "commercial" gets everybody up in arms. But the bottom line is, if you want to do something different in this corridor, there is such a thing as "commercial," they can be like commercial. So it's like, I thought that we would go around and just talk about, what do you see in this corridor? And I'm being specific, if you don't know, that's okay, too, because it's, it's, I mean, I think that's where we get educated, like, I wouldn't know enough, and I think you and I talked about this, Nick, is I wouldn't know enough, is like, yeah, I'd like to see this, this, and this, but if you don't have enough there, or there's not enough space, then it raises the rent, and then you end up having empty vacant areas that are what they call ghost towns, because they're unaffordable. And that was proven in a former meeting with planning board, where the question was asked, "What would you allow if we did something down here?" And I think the numbers were tabulated by, through our current ordinances, and I think it was Mr. LaBelle from planning board that right away said, "Well, now you've put us at over $40 a square foot." Well, $40 a square foot, I would argue, may be a waiverly price, or somewhere where you have that, but in here, it's, it's not going to work. So what is it, and maybe we just start with, "What would you like to see?" Now, I'll start, if that's okay with you, because I was reading an article, of all things, yes, I read Charlotte occasionally, but you know, what caught my attention is the future of retail. And I'm not looking to get a retail thing, I just started reading the article in here. And what's, what's cool about this, and it just, it just gave me an idea, okay? So, if we looked at that property down here in this corner as a gathering place, we talked about putting a farmer's market there. I think, Derek, you and I have discussed about, you know, what you, we, I know we talked about, you know, where the trail comes through, where it leads right through there and stuff, but it, it becomes an area where it becomes a gathering place. Could be a little park, could be a farmer's market slash amphitheater and stuff. And then I remembered what Weddington's been doing. And they're not that successful at it, but it's, it's a great idea, I think. And the reason it's not successful is because of the location. They have, every weekend, and when the weather gets nice, they have food trucks come in. No fixed buildings, come in. Food trucks now, if you know anything about them, are, they're high-end culinary meals on wheels, basically. And they pull up and, you know, you allow one or two of them to come up in there, you could have venues, but I could see something like that for the park, where it's not, you're not erecting a building, you're creating an amphitheater-type space where you can have music in there. What I learned from Terry Shook is that we have the perfect storm when you look at roundabout to roundabout. And what he meant by that is, it's walkable, and it's also, you want to focus on... And what he meant by that is it's walkable and it's also, you, you want to focus on gathering places. And gathering places usually mean food, food eateries, like places that you'd go or go to shop. So, I've always been on record, I don't want anything big. And the way you control that is by the, what you allow per square footage under one building. The average retail today, if you were doing retail, is only 1,500 square feet, another thing I learned from him. And a lot of this stuff now, the trend is, as I read this, this article, is the trend is, you buy it online, but you come into the small shop to actually try it on or, or if you were going to be buying clothing and stuff, and to try it on, if you don't like it, it's just like, no, I'm, and you don't have to deal with any of the, big box, oh, there you go, you got to use the board, this was awesome. Just want to point out for the record, Kim has now taken over the thing, so. But, so it was an interesting concept where, and what they're doing also, is they're taking places that aren't being used right now, whether, empty buildings or empty spaces, and these unique shops are going to there for like short periods of time, a week or two weeks, and they're, 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 they're showing their wares and stuff like that, but that's the trend that's going on. The other trend is still buy online, the product gets shipped to that small store, that person comes in as an appointment to, to, you know, if, if it was a retail type small. So I'm not a big box store, I never was, I'm not, I, I, I'm, I'd have to see what it looks like, as, as I, as I was listening to Terry Shook a year ago, I was hearing, Burke Dale Village and all the shops and it just became, you know, almost I was pumping the brakes, but then the light went off for me. But it was really around gathering places, which was food, so I'm looking at farmer's market type place, like a place like Heritage, which is farm, a table restaurant, coffee shop. I could see even small, I think we had people come in here that have small, just a small business that they could, if there was a second floor, they could be on the second floor, an accounting firm, or someone that doesn't necessarily have to do with public all the time. The, the article I pulled, the other article I pulled was from our encore that's, Unexpected Sites List Carolinas Make the List of Best Small U.S. Cities. And National Geographic has said the judging was based on unconventional metrics, which led to, which, that, we think led to happiness, green spaces, galleries, coffee shops, breweries, music menus, Instagrammable moments, I'm not sure what that does, and more. But, but it's, maybe it's when you use a Snapchat and you taking a picture of where you're at and stuff. But I thought this is what, you know, these are some of the new sites and what, what they were judging it on, why people want to gravitate is. And to have a gathering space, I would say, yeah, people get fearful of, oh, okay, you create all this traffic. I would argue, if we're going to do commerce, we're, most of us are going up to Blakeney, we're going to Valentine, and we're, all we're doing is putting traffic up there when we don't have to, if they're coming through here anyways, there's a reason to pop over. I also like the idea of like a, like a small reeds market, like a, a small, where you can just pop in and maybe get some, you know.
Like a boutique grocery store?
A boutique grocery store, like, that I could quickly say, hey, honey, why don't you stop and grab a couple of steaks on the way.
Market type place that you can get steaks and veggies.
Almost like they have right next, just south of St. Matthews, that meat marketplace. It's a butcher's market and stuff. I know there's people that are interested in like a yoga shops and stuff like that, I mean, those, I mean, you could do yoga out in a, in a, if you had the right type of field. I know there was talk of this, we incorporate some other land and work with that landowner, that, you know, you could, they, they may be willing to work to do something in exchange for something, but the whole idea is us to not get too crazy where it gets too high density, but it's enough to make it work, and it becomes gathering places for people and Marvin that just, you know, want to get away, want to go to a nice restaurant. Because our, our, our options are limited, nobody wants to necessarily drive all the way down to Waxaw to go eat. I'd like to keep the dollars in, in the things, but what it is, and I will say this for the record, that I've heard also people, when you talk about this, they literally say, I want nothing. I want nothing, because, and they're, they want to close the door as they, as they got in and they don't want anything else. And I will argue that when you want nothing, you will eventually get something, something you don't want. And when you control it from roundabout to roundabout, so my vision for this town would be to own the roads and determine what comes through here, and you control the speed, you control the look. Everyone who builds in here, if they did individually or they grouped up together with these landowners, it's a look that we're trying to get, it's walkable. And my argument for that is, they're already talking about widening the South Carolina part of Newtown Road to invite us to go down there and go see the movies and go do all the things that, that we've been doing in Valentine, which is North Carolina versus South Carolina. And Union County is already talking about, well, how do they pair up with that? Which means a widening of Newtown eventually. When you widen this road and this right through here, you've now destroyed the charm that we've all identified as our kind of downtown corridor. So, I, please add to that list, that's all I was trying to do is a roundtable about where, and then I will be the first one to tell you, I have no idea how to go about that, but I think it starts with us not telling landowners what we think is best for their land, let's get those landowners at a table like this and say, tell us what you want, and, and, and is there a happy medium that we can all come together and say, yes, this is, we could, we could accept this, they made one pie in this guy, we may have to kindly say, no, that's, that's not for Marvin, but, but there could be some happy mediums that, that address all these things along this core corridor. That I think, we have an opportunity to do something special, and I think you only have one chance to do it right. It's not like you get a do-over in these things and stuff, so. So that's, that's kind of where I come from, again, please, I mean, and, and, and we would have to limit what the mountain size we would allow on one parcel size of building, because that big box store, I mean, they're fitting more and more in condensing the Walmarts of the world down to mini Walmarts and all that kind of stuff, so you gotta be very careful in what you allow square footage, I, I believe. But there's opportunities for things that I think people would enjoy having right in Marvin and not have to go to, to Mecklenburg County or even down to Waxaw, and you have, what, 16,000 cars coming through here every day? You're not building homes in these, you know, things, and to do nothing, again, may, we may be stepping on our own feet, because they, they could, as landowners, say, look, you know, let's ask, and it's happened before, it's not like it hasn't happened, it happened and we're seeing it happen, Catty Corner from Coles, where they came to us, it wasn't even a proposal, it was just an idea, and we said, no, that doesn't fit. They go to the state, the state pulls it out, plucks it out of Marvin, and now it's Union County, and now we're getting apartments? Apartments. Used to be Marvin and now it's apartments. Not because of anything we did, we just said, no, it doesn't fit our thing, they never brought us a proposal, but what's to say that these landowners don't do the same thing? I mean, I know for a fact that they've already had conversations with Senator Tommy Tucker about issues with this, so. And why aren't we sitting them down at a table is my question, and just find out what it is they want, so that's my goal for that. And then I'll be quiet.
I mean, since I, since I first got elected to the council back in 2007, that was already one of the first, you know, conversations I remember having was about this historical district, the downtown district, I mean, from Marvin Road to, well, the roundabout idea was even there, but Marvin Road to Marvin School Road. It was always kind of pictured to be where Marvin would, you know, the downtown area Marvin would be. I mean, personally, I really, I've always, you know, been in favor of that. I feel like Marvin doesn't have an identity, really, I mean, we're just, there is no, you know, there is no real Marvin, I mean, to me, that would be someplace that would give us a little identity, give us our identity and, and be a spot, you know. Like you said, a gathering place, even, I mean, I always thought that was even kind of funny, even when you're in election time, you know, there's no place where you could go, you know, like downtown to a coffee shop and maybe run into people and talk to people and exchange ideas or, you know, I mean, sort of walking to people's houses, you have no way that you're going to meet anybody in Marvin. I, I think most of the things you mentioned up there, you know, are kind of on the idea of, you know, would be in the vision, you know, small, you know, boutique kind of places, I think. I guess my, my problem with it is I'm not real that great visually, so I would like to be able to see something and show me what could fit here and what might, it might look like, and I guess the other, you know, big question is, what I have in my mind, is that even, you know, financially possible for a developer or, you know, or anybody even, you know, to be able to do that, I mean, you know. And then I'd like to know if, if, if it's not, then what do we need to have? What do we need to have here that becomes doable?
Viable.
And then, can we live with that or do we want, people, will the residents accept that or will we accept that? You know, because everybody has pie in the sky, they, you know, you ask, you ask some, everybody, everybody wants lollipops and velvet roads and, you know, stuff, and developers want six-story parking garages and, you know, so I mean, I'm sure nobody gets everything they want, but we, we need to have an idea of what's viable and what could be done.
So Nick, the big discussion over the election was master plan and stuff. So I'm a picture guy too, I like to see what things are going to potentially look like, what we would allow, what we wouldn't allow. Where do you see that? Cause there's probably going to be a cost associated, people could take the land that we've identified as a land, you know, where the downtown corridor was going to be, and going historical puts you at a different level, if I'm not mistaken, as far as what you can do and what you can't do if you train.
I'm not saying it's got to be historical, I'm saying that was, that was the word that was thrown.
Well, we learned we had historical dirt here, so.
I think the main thing is we first need to get the landowners and talk to them and find out what, like you said, I don't even know if they're all on the same page with themselves, I mean, you know, if there really is a landowners group or if it's three of them or two of them or six of them, you know, where.
So Jelena and I are going to work on that letter to the home, to the landowners and try to put that out, but I think my biggest.
More of an invite.
Yeah, an invite, but my question is, do we do that joint with the planning board, with just council, with just planning board?
You mean, you send it to planning board first, I think it's, I think we can stop it in its tracks if they're saying, we want apartments, condos, high density on the far end over here where it's, you know, we can do it and stuff, I said, we could probably shut that down right there. And say, that's not even close to what we were looking at, but, you know, I mean, and, and to some extent, even Union County probably would not approve it, but they have approved storage facilities, as we've seen and stuff, and that's the last thing I want to see here. Storage and or, you know, flapping things, selling mattresses. Or a mattress store and stuff, so, I mean, being at the table with them is going to, we're going to control a lot more than letting it go to Union County, which they could care less what ends up here.
So should we have a planning board there, just so they can hear and, and listen and learn?
I mean, you could tell them that, I mean, they can come as a group, I don't know, it's, I'm, I'm open to that, I, I would just say, let them.
I don't know either way, I've never done this, so.
And I haven't either.
I'm just asking the question.
Would that be a topic that you would want to discuss with them at your, at the joint meeting? I, I think that would be something that you might want to just kind of mention and, and see where, where their thoughts are.
Yes, quite frankly, I don't even know where to send a letter to, but I can find it out who it is, but I know there's one person, we tend to get letters from Odell, that I believe is on that group. I'm, I mean, that's a great idea, I mean, we, we're meeting with them and, planning board, yeah, I mean, we're meeting with them in, in March, but part of that process is how, how, how do they see them fit in? And I don't know, they're just a recommending board anyways, but it's.
Yeah, but they're, but, but they're a recommending board, but there's citizens that, that, that are on that board that have a stake in what you are trying to accomplish here. And if you can, if you can put, get them on board, and then that, that's going to be, you know, a lot of your problems, they can pave that way for you with other citizens, they, they can be the conduit between you as council to other citizens here in Marvin to, to sell that master plan. So I would think you would want to encourage that.
For an initial meeting, you never know how they will, you're just worrying about how everyone's going to respond.
So you just have a meeting with just them?
Landowners to be heard.
Well, no, I'm saying, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I, I think what you're saying Barbie too is really good, because if we can get planning board on board, they can help, I hear what you're saying Laura, in terms of maybe the landowners just want to talk it over, but maybe for the planning board joint meeting, maybe we have somebody like Terry Shook come back in. I would love to see what a master plan will look like, I've never seen it, I.
Tell me who Terry Shook is.
He happens to be one of the top architects in the country, happens to be located in Charlotte. Invited us all up in the planning board, so they actually had a forum, a full meeting, because most planning board people. And I, and there were homeowners there too, residents, five acre landowners, one that lives right down in the corridor. His presentation was a, full-on presentation was well over an hour, and it really got into question and answer, and I, I could see planning board, wow, this is too, but then all of a sudden, I think for a lot of us, including some landowners, they said, man, this, we can't lose this message, I mean, his idea of what you can do, and you get to control everything, you don't necessarily just throw in a Burke Dale here, and I don't think anybody wants that.
Right.
But I think, and, and I think that's where he knows, he's probably more familiar with the process, because he does that for a living. He's one of the top community builders like that, that builds small towns, he's all over the country doing this. He's an officer, former PD person, I used to sell, you know, medical supplies. She's in real estate, what the heck do we know about, you know, this? And that's why you, you have to surround yourself with these type of individuals, to guide us into what's our next step. We, I've always heard that, you know, this master plan, other council members may say, well, they bring us a plan, bring us a plan, well, you have 12 different landowners, that would bring you 12 different plans right now, so maybe we can get these in, and maybe they, they combine, and, and all this is purchased by a, and I hate to use the word, a developer, or maybe it's multiple developers, but they're very well vetted, you see the product they have, and that's through the ordinances determines in a design review board, what you will and won't allow in there. So going in, you know, that, that's set out in the beginning and stuff, what you will allow, what you won't allow, what kind of space you would allow, but that's.
Have you talked about doing a small area plan in the village center that we've marked between the roundabouts?
When you say small area plan, do you think that?
Hiring someone who is an expert, a lot of architectural background, to sit down with all the people and all this, all the property owners that are in this area and, you know, they end up mediating a lot of this and talking about what it could look like and being able to speak their language about, you know, what they could build.
So the debate comes in where pace with that expert that runs it, is it the village, is it the, is it government's responsibility to do that, or is it the landowner who needs to come in and spend that money and say, hey, here's the proposal and stuff?
Well, if you had one landowner, that would be easy, but you have so many.
Right.
So maybe we're talking about a combination of, of that.
Or a shared cost between them and maybe the village, because I would, I would envision this as a public-private partnership in a sense that, you know, especially if we're including town hall is going to be in, in part of this, either one end of the roundabout or the other.
That way it's all done in, you know, I know that you guys want to have those meetings, but sometimes it's good to have somebody there who's a little, who's one step back and can, can bring in all the sides.
I, I, I think, there's been three meetings with this guy who's a, one of the top architects. One, he did it pro bono, then he did it for the landowners, and then he was kind enough to come, and this was all pro bono, and, and do it at our retreat, which was the shrunken down version of the 10-minute spiel that he had, which still impressed Mr. Epps, because he pulled me aside, he goes, that was impressive. I go, you, you don't know the, anything, because nothing, there's so much more to this than, and all I'm saying is, let's gather these experts. You know, and then, then you get accused of being, you know, somehow.
Pro development?
Well, pro development or someone who's like in, in, in line with them and I'm somehow going to be compensated for any of this, and, you know. And it, it's unfortunate, but I, I would rather have experts telling us and telling the landowners, because I don't think the landowners know what the process is, but there's a, there are people that do this.
Right.
That's, that's, and, and you, you can look to see what they've done and what, what. That's, that's, and you, you can look to see what they've done and what, what you like and what you don't like. And he's got some, and what they pointed to in the last, even over the elections, they pointed to this huge, huge, high-density multimillion dollar, which was Marvin Creek, I think. It was originally.
It was gonna be the, uh.
So Longview, uh?
Yeah, for Longview South, but it was gonna be where, uh.
Where Amber Meadows.
Amber's Meadows.
Right, where Amber Meadows was.
That's Tullamore.
So it was this same guy that did it because his client was telling him, here's what I wanna propose. So they did this whole thing and it.
A million and a half square feet.
Yeah, it was a million and a half square feet and a very small amount. Did, did not speak to Marvin at all, which I get, you know? Um, and it didn't happen. But that's not saying he can't do something on a smaller scale that fits what we are about to create an identity that Nick talked about. And, you know, it, it comes down to, you know, we'll eventually get to the uses of, you know, we don't want tattoo parlors and stuff like that, which is, you know, but a flower shop? I mean, there's just so many ideas that will take me from going all the way up to Blakeney to go do my commerce, whether it's a dry cleaner, you know, or, you know, but you could do a dry cleaner in a pretty cool looking spot if you had to. Not that that's gonna happen here or not, but.
Having that expert, I think, would help you with those meetings and getting that.
I agree.
So what do you think the next, what do you think the first step is?
I still think the first step is get the landowners together and have a meeting.
And see if they even wanna do anything.
And, and I don't even know if you bring in planning board.
No, I think you're right. I think you're right. I was just asking a question.
It's less people and just saying, look, we're open about listening to, it's your land. At the end of the day, it's their land.
That's all I had, tell us about it. Tell us, tell us what you're, what you're.
Cause if you don't wanna do anything, then we're done.
In all fairness, when I met with Mr. Fincher and he came in and we did it like they want us to do, by the book and meet with another council member, he talked about how much land their family owned for years. It was hundreds and hundreds. Now he's got what's left, left, and he says he wants to do something special to leave for his family. And I can't imagine he's gonna do something. I mean, some of these lenders may be able to do it on their own and you don't even need a developer, but they would work in conjunction with the other.
I think we sorta have to, not tell them, but you know, you sorta wanna kinda tell them that, you know, we're looking at possibly, you know, the development of the downtown corridor and a master plan, but you guys gotta get together and, you know, I mean, you all gotta be on the same, you know, if you want a master plan or whatever, I mean, again, because if you just have one, Fincher tell you one thing and over here tell you something else and everybody between says, I don't want nothing.
So, so maybe have this meeting, a call for this meeting and see who can attend when everyone's available and then call someone in like a Shook, they could sit there and just kinda step back and say, okay, well, in my experience, here's how, here's how it's been done in the past and stuff.
And I don't know how much interplay Shook has had with these, the landowners.
I know he's been to one of their meetings.
I mean, he may have some idea already of what their flaws are.
So maybe we meet with them like at the beginning of the meeting and then have somebody come in.
Well, actually he would be here for that meeting, just to hear them out and see what they want. I, I, that's what I like to look at because he would wanna know what.
He should be, I mean, he should be here to hear them out, but he may also already have some knowledge of what they want.
He may, he may, yeah. I mean, he had already on a map, quite frankly, he had on the map all the areas that were available. And, and interestingly enough, he included Meadowlark, all of Meadowlark, as in the five acre lots. And I'm thinking, oh, this, and, and right in the meeting was a homeowner of Meadowlark. But, so obviously he needed to be more educated about what would be converted or not. That's, I, to me is, would be off limits, but for that homeowner that lives in Meadowlark? You tell me that that's not gonna increase their land value if they can ride a bike or cross or get to a, a ice cream store or whatever it is that they want, go see and ride a bike to it rather than having to get in a car? That doesn't add value to their property? I think she saw that in the meeting and that's why she came to me and said, let's not lose this message. Let's do something really cool, but we're not the experts in it. Let's, let's accept that and just get the right people is what my hope is.
So you and I'll start working on the letter next week?
Okay.
And we'll have something for council to review on the 13th.
Okay.
For the landowners.
I mean, no, for you guys to review.
No, exactly.
Yeah, for the landowners, an invite.
Yes.
And let me figure out, yeah, I mean, it would be an, an invite to Mr. Shook too, I would assume. And, and the only reason I use his name is I don't know him other than the three times that I've met with him in meetings and stuff and I, I know a little bit about his work and stuff and it's just, you know.
But I think, I think we wanna get a reply from the landowners, not, you know, kind of, I really don't see the purpose of having a meeting and have three of them show up out of 11.
Yeah.
Well, I agree.
What time do you need to leave?
Five minutes.
Oh, cause we were just getting into roundtable, I mean, discussing consideration code enforcement? Oh, that's, oh, we're done.
Derek, I'm done. Perfect timing, thank you.
We did some, this is all right.
Look at that, I'm back on time now. I'm actually ahead of schedule. Take a break.
No.
We'll see you Monday.
Thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Okay, um, so we'll get going on that. And then next we have Derek Durst discussing consideration of code enforcement.
You gotta throw the hat on?
Get a new shirt for that, so.
How would you say?
So when your name's on the list on the agenda, that means you get to present and tell us what all the things.
I get to present?
Yeah, or whatever you're thinking and, or any questions we have for them, so.
Okay, so I'll just give you a quick overview then. As it was presented to me when I was given the job, code enforcement was to be 25% of my job, 10 hours a week. I was not really given any instruction as to how that should play out. Um, and, you know, the person that hired me left shortly after I started. So I've just sort of, I've kind of done it on my own. Um, as, as it's come about, it started off where we would get a few complaints a week, maybe, maybe one or two a week really. Um, but it wasn't taking more than two to five hours a week to handle them. Um, almost all of them have been situations where I go, I talk to the homeowner, they weren't aware of the code violation or they were in the process of working on it and fixing it and, and then it's shortly resolved thereafter. I've never had to, um, I've sent a couple of letters, but I've never had to send anybody like a notice of violation where, where we're gonna start assessing the penalty. Um, and that's not my style personally. I try to go make face-to-face contact, talk to them, you know, and, and see if we can't come up with a very quick resolution. And everyone that I've dealt with has been, um, pretty, pretty cooperative. I, um, I don't go out there specifically looking for violations, but I am mobile a lot with the other duties and, and I'm looking at that time, if that makes sense. So I'm not saying from nine to 11, I'm just gonna ride around and look for stuff. But if I happen to be traveling between gas, gassing up the vehicles or, um, going to Lowe's or coming from the park to town hall, uh, then I, then I might be looking for stuff. And then periodically I'll drive through a neighborhood and make sure that somebody I'd talked to about having high grass is keeping up with their property and those sort of things. So honestly, um, I don't think that it takes 10 hours a week to do it. Um, and I had the thought of proposing to you all to just take it off of my plate and, um, hire an external company to do it. But I think you lose that, uh, kind of relational aspect of it and then you lose the familiarity of which that I have with the residents. Um, so if you were going to adjust the hours, which I would, wouldn't be opposed to, if you don't see it continuing needing to be a 10-hour-a-week thing, um, then, then I would say just leave it on my job description, but as a, uh, just as a, as it comes up type of thing, um, you know? But if there's things that you want me to do to tweak, then, then, you know, we can talk about those.
Do we see a lot of complaints right now?
Right now, I haven't seen one in a long time.
And then the last one I remember was near the, on 16 and the, the last one I remember, actually there was one after that, but 16 where the age restricted was and the property owner, just in the north, and what he was doing with his land. Most recent one I know, and I don't know if it was you that went and talked to him, but I actually ran into him, um, Mr. Carr at the Lowe's and said, I was gonna say something. I thought, no, I'm gonna leave it to the process because there was, if you didn't know, and someone that same day called and he, by the way, I think he talked to you, but he said he was so happy that he got someone on the phone and they took action right away and stuff. I said, interesting you say that because I made the same phone call to you, I believe, about removing that mulch that was just dumped where a culvert was to, for water to release. So what was happening in the heavy downpour, because that was all blocked, water went out onto the street and on Joe Carr and someone flying down that road goes into a hydroplane major accident, but because, but it was removed like the next day. So did you have a conversation with someone over there or did?
I didn't. I would love to take credit for it, but.
Wonder how it got there? Did someone, someone had to just from the village call there? Cause I remember the same day and there was a resident from my neighborhood that happened to pull me aside and said, I just want you to know, thank you, your staff is, whatever they did. I says, I go, well, you and I must've called in the same day, but it happened and it was gone. So for what it's worth, so, okay, so I won't give you credit for that. But you feel like you're sufficiently trained, cause I know you went through some training.
Um, I, that I think could be debated. I'm, I'm not sure what, you know, exactly the council is looking for or expecting in a code enforcement officer. I'll say that the eight hours of training that I did receive, um, was more of the, how to administer the paperwork side of things, but not the, um, legal side of where Marvin's codes stand and digging through the codes, that, those have been my, my bigger struggles. Um, just kind of wanting to see those cleaned up a little bit to feel like, to feel comfortable trying to enforce some of those.
And you've been past, worked mostly with county, I assume, and then now probably Laura has, then she gets her feet wet and stuff, probably be getting pulled from both different directions. But I don't know about you guys, but I mean, if there's, not to worry, it's not like we have to dedicate and you have to go out and be the Gestapo for me and go find things. But if it's, certainly we want someone to respond. Having someone with your demeanor, I think, is probably the best first opportunity to address the issue. You can go to that person and say, look, you know, here's the deal, this is the ordinance, this is clearly in violation. Is there something, you know, you can do and start that? I think you've got the perfect demeanor. I don't see us going outside, cause then that's just hiring a separate, it's like the landscaper that we have to hire here that comes and goes. But I'm not saying that, and this is just me in one speaking, that you gotta take that 10 hours and go find stuff, cause I don't think that's, I don't think that's the intent of Marvin. I mean, usually we hear from neighbors.
Yeah, most of, most of the people that I've asked from other municipalities, their code enforcement is complaint-driven. You know, and so that's what I've relied on, our complaints and things that I hear. Um, like I said, there have been a few instances where I may see something driving by. I'll notice, you know, signs, signs are up improperly or high grass, but.
We don't have any issues with people parking cars or working on the cars in the front lawns or anything. I mean, I know there's these five acre parcels that, there's one gentleman across from us that I know he, it's in an open thing, but he works on cars and it's in just an open hangar that the cars are there and stuff. So, I don't know, I mean, it's, I, we, we don't have those kind of issues, is what I'm saying.
Not too many of them. Most of the things I hear about are high grass, uh, sign ordinance violations.
Which really should be addressed by the HOAs. They typically have something with, they, they take over and get the place cut just to make their neighborhood look nice and stuff. So you're saying we're doing that? It has to be, probably be in non-HOA areas, I would assume.
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, and I've worked along with the HOAs, the ones, you know, when they, they've tried and they haven't had any luck and they'll come to me and ask me to kinda lean on them a little bit or. You might have a situation where there's a land, um, houses being rented and the actual owner lives, you know, maybe in Mecklenburg County or, um, over in Wesley Chapel. So I've had, made a couple of trips over there to find the landowner to let them know, hey, your tenant's not keeping up your, the property. Can you lean on them a little bit? Sure, absolutely. Sorry, we weren't aware.
I think that what it's set up now is fine in the fact that approximately 10 hours, whether it's 10 hours or it's three hours or it's five hours, I mean, uh, you said, I don't really foresee that you want, that we want you out there looking for, you know, pick up stuff, you know, just to try and find violations, riding around neighborhoods and, you know, stuff like that. Like I said, if you're on your way going and you happen, you do see something, then you should take, you know, action and, you know, if it's a violation that you see in your normal travels, I guess. Cause I don't think we think we want you out there, you know, spending five hours riding around neighborhoods looking for stuff. Uh, and again, you know, if, if you have one week where you have one complaint and it takes you two hours to take it, then that's what it took you that week. If next week you have 14 complaints and it takes you 30 hours, well, that week it took you 30 hours, I guess. I mean, yeah.
I, I think of the, the, the one thing that I see.
They put an hour number really.
Yeah, I don't know if they need a sign in there.
Well, no, because he's, sorry, because he's full-time and so, you know, he works his full-time schedule and when he doesn't do code enforcement, he does park.
Right, well, I'm saying, so if he has, one week he has to do a little less parks, cause he's got more complaints.
As long as it's not 30 hours where he's got park responsibilities to do, then that's okay. But I don't think it's not ever.
Well, I mean, if it ever got to that point, it would end, became that, that way, any kind of consistency, we'd have to, you know, somebody else or we'd have to get more help. But, uh, I don't think that's, you know, I don't think we have that issue, which, you know.
Best thing I'd see is if there's anything I see and it pops up occasionally, one, it's been there forever, but it's a little sign that says that it's attached to a tree and it's high enough up there.
Was that stump removal?
Stump removal. And it's like on a property and it's like, it's advertising and like, it's just kinda like, and nobody says anything about it. But then occasionally you'll see it where someone just posts a cheap sign and, and put it right in the corner for stump removal and stuff. I mean, like little advertisements for stuff like that.
Yeah, and if I see those on village property, I'll, I'll go, I'll, sometimes I'll pick them up, sometimes I'll call them.
This one's gonna take a while.
Give them a chance, yeah. I haven't seen this one you're talking about.
It's on the corner of Joe Carr and it's up, up.
Joe Carr and Marvin, yep. As you're, as you're coming on to Joe Carr and you hit Marvin right before, right on the right, it's a big tree. You look up and it's stump grinder with the phone number on it. So it's on the right, can't miss it.
No, we're not telling anybody going down there, don't, don't leave.
Yeah, don't leave us.
It's a Brantley property?
I don't know whoever owns that corner, but it's a stump grinder.
Yeah, I don't know, is that, it's where the donkey and the.
Taking payments now?
Okay.
Like it's where the donkey forces.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. And that, that probably, you can't miss the tree and it's just a little sign. But I've seen occasionally where, I mean, what drives me crazy and I hope we never get to this is every weekend those signs go up on the corners of like Crane and Newtown Road and all the places that are advertising for homes and stuff like that. They have 50 signs on the corners and stuff.
And, and those aren't in Marvin.
Right, right.
I've talked, there, there were some that, that were in Marvin and I went directly to the, uh, people who were putting them out and, um, it's, it's not the real estate company. They hire an outside party and I talked to them about our ordinance and they cleaned it up. And, um, the most recent one, you know, I got a call from a, a neighbor in Weddington Chase about the, uh, the mattress fundraiser going on at the school. Um, but we, we just decided that we would leave that up since it was a fundraiser for the high school.
There's a big one up on Villa Tom robbery.
Yeah.
Big.
Sign?
Big.
It's the band, the mattress.
It's the band.
They do it once a year.
Yeah.
And somebody moved our railroad ties again.
Oh, by the way, that, so you know, I got a call from Ed Swan, the concrete, he found a, a person that will take it and recycle it, but it will be slowly removed because they don't necessarily, their trucks aren't always full and as they're not full, they'll come in, add it to it and eventually. But we do need to consider. But we do need to consider some sort of maybe a high cable line unless DOT, when they come in and do the roundabouts, they can do some sort of barrier there. I see DOT using that to park their vehicles while they're doing the roundabouts, quite frankly.
Well, they moved the, they moved the, I don't think that note was meant for you.
I'm sorry.
They moved the two-by-fours that blocked off the entrance.
They moved the two-by.
They moved them so that people are, so I feel like somebody else is dumping stuff in there.
Can we do, put a deer camera there? That's a simple, that's the simple fix.
I'm wondering if.
And face it right in to see who's coming in.
I, I'm wondering if it was a power company to drop off the new poles and just didn't happen to move it back. I don't know.
Looks like somebody dropped a few loads of like gravel.
Okay.
And so I don't know if that has anything to do with construction.
No one's ordered it on this.
Construction or what in the area. Deputy Swan does have one of those cameras.
I think we need to put something up there.
Yeah, just need to bring it in.
And all you do is you face it, not where traffic is, they don't activate every time there's motion, so if, but if, if they could put it in a place, I'm sure, and just point it and, and if we see something new, all you do is go back to the camera and pull it out and if it's by where moving traffic is, you're gonna get pictures all the time, so you don't want that, so.
But we have a, we have a system, we have a system of, you know, tracking any code enforcement stuff, when the complaint came in, when it was, when he was assigned it, when his, you know, what you did with it, what disposition on it, but, you know, so we have a record of what, you know, if somebody calls, and I called three weeks ago on this and we can go and check, you can go and check and say, okay, here, came in here, I gave it to.
Right, there's a form.
I gave it to Derek on Tuesday. He went out twice, tried to get the guy who wasn't home or something, you know.
Right, I have a file that has all the paperwork that I do the detailed write-ups on and then there's a summary on.
I mean, is that submitted into here that that could be entered into?
Yeah, it's on a spreadsheet.
Would you guys like to see that?
No, I'm just, just saying that that's, we do have that in place and that's the only thing I would say. We just wanna make sure we, you know, if somebody, you know, makes a complaint, that we can, you know, answer them when they call back and say, well.
So you all are okay with the process as it's working now and the number of hours.
Again, he says 10 hours, but if he doesn't have 10 hours, I'm gonna say you gotta spend 10 hours.
I like your ideas. You're driving through and you happen to be going, it's, it's one more step to take a, go through a neighborhood that you haven't been through in a while, just to just see.
If you happen to be taking a ride one day, you're not, you want to, you have that option to spend 10 hours riding around.
I assume your place is pretty full already.
It is. I mean, I, you know, I stay pretty much on the go between here and the park and I think the good thing about having me do it versus an outside agency or some person is most times I can respond immediately. You know, if we get a call or complaint or even if it's helping Kelly, you know, can you go take a picture of this property for me or take, can you look at this tree or can you meet me out here or something? You know, I can pretty much wrap up what I'm doing and respond.
Obviously, no, no reason to get it outside. Think of last week, I saw some complaints that you couldn't help.
Well, then you're gonna get somebody to come, that comes in once a week, you know.
Like what we used to have where somebody came in here and they were here every week on Tuesday. Well, then when something happened on another day of the week, they weren't available.
I, I have that in my HOA in Arizona and it's like, you got weeds and you're running, get a letter and it's like, really? You gotta call the, you know, it's like, but is what it is. All right, mom, I'm good, I think. Does that give you direction as far as where, okay. Appreciate you coming by to share with us.
We'll, we'll see later on in the program, apparently, yes.
For. Loop draws, oh yeah, because I do have discussion for that.
Yeah, these next three won't be very long, I don't think, so don't go too far away.
Okay.
And next up is actually gonna be, instead of 13, it's actually 11. There was a misnumbering there. But we're a little ahead of schedule, so I will, can I? I need a break again. It's too much icing. I'm gonna call for a quick recess.